Meeting will come to order. For the record, it is Tuesday, February 25th, 2020, 6:00 PM. We'll begin this meeting with real call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilwoman Perot.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burnt.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Item two is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
You don't want me to pray?
If you'd like to, you're more than welcome to.
I move that we... Wait one second, we have a little change on 6A. The applicant has requested to continue to March 10th. I guess we'll approach that when we get to that section of the agenda. With that, I move that we adopt the agenda as changed.
Second. As published? As published. Second. I motion second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, if they can signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item four, future meeting topics, public forum. Did anyone sign up?
Mr. Mayor, nobody has signed up.
Okay, then we will move on to item 5A. Community items, Transportation Commission annual report. It will be presented by Mr. Ballard. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor Simison. Ms. Strater, Mr. Borton, Mr. Brent, Mr. Hoagland, Ms. Per... Perofall, excuse me, Peralt, and Mayor Simison. Good evening. My name is David Ballard. I reside at 2482 East Springwood Drive in Meridian. Currently, I am the Chair of the Transportation Commission. I have served for six years, and I would like to acknowledge the privilege and the opportunity that I have been given to serve on the commission. I believe it is a wonderful opportunity to participate in a limited fashion in the role of the City Council and the government, as well as in the community at large. I'd also like to acknowledge the other members on the commission. David McKinney, Stephen Lewis, Tracy Hopkins, Ryan Hall, Ryan Lancaster, Joseph Leckie, and Tom Leclair. And I do that, present company excluded, because I believe these individuals bring a passion for transportation issues in Meridian. We have some very robust discussions in the commission, and I think we do at least bring some resolutions to be considered by City Council. I would also like to acknowledge the deep technical experience that the other members have. There's a traffic management, construction individual, two transportation engineers, two attorneys, a banker, and last but not least, is our youth member. Besides the technical experience, they bring a lot of practical experience to the commission. Now, in looking at the commission, it's called the Transportation Commission, but we're not limited to cars. We take up issues of bikes, scooters, pedestrians, which leads to pathways, sidewalks, also transit, and last but not least, rail. But the focus is moving people and freight. Key phrase, I believe, is moving people, just not about cars, about getting to point A to point B, and looking at some resolutions. Now, overarching, I believe, is safety and the considerations in our conversations, and also the aspect of community and good neighbors. So, for instance, we looked at an issue, an HOH, HOA issue. They were looking at, should we adopt or can we adopt a 20 mile an hour speed limit as opposed to a 25 mile an hour speed limit? That was one issue. Another issue that comes up is people, and I get it, taking their children to meet the school bus, but unfortunately, they crowd the road, maybe park where should not be parking and impends traffic. But in discussing those issues, we take into account, can we offer a resolution to make that a safer practice? What can we do? And along those lines of sidewalks, Commissioner Lancaster volunteered to form a subcommittee to step back, and if there's a particular issue, to, I don't want to say take it offline, it still is open, but the HOA that came in, that had a discussion about parking and the school bus and pedestrians, they were able to take that conversation in the subcommittee and come up with a path forward, another resolution. Now, sometimes it seems that we deal with unintended consequences. A lot of planning has gone into locating schools, building sidewalks, roads, pathways, what have you. But over time, as a project matures, the subdivision matures, traffic exceeds expectations. One in particular, and this happens more often than not, I think, people chose, choose the path the least resistant so they avoid going into the parking lot, they avoid parking on school grounds, and they crowd into neighborhoods. Unintended consequences. And along those issues, when I say unintended consequences, the commission has asked, and we started a dialogue with the mayor this afternoon, the commission is asking to put more issues on our plate, more thoughts for consideration. And again, we do that in the sense of our practical experience, our technical expertise, and if we are the Transportation Commission, we're asking to have more transportation issues come before. One that is in a very large, or excuse me, way out in the stratosphere, is there an opportunity to review any plans? Again, I will use, by way of example, we have two traffic engineers, pretty smart guys, and I use that as an example because in our conversations in the commission, we'll usually see something or something comes out that gives another idea, something to consider, or maybe what I call a path forward to resolving. And so, we have asked, and this next Monday in the commission, we will take up that conversation generally about what that may look for, and we'll have to visit with Mr. Neri about the legal ramifications. And in some process, can we be another voice? Now, I'm not asking to make a decision because we're an advisory committee or a commission, but I'm asking if we can bring another set of eyes to a situation and maybe offer what I consider some deep transportation experience, and I'll exclude myself. So, from the council's perspective, we're asking, what can we do to better help you in reaching decisions? Can we bring more information? Now, it's also kind of fun, only a lawyer uses sometimes describing what he does or she does is kind of fun, but taking this work somewhat serious, but the commission also gives us an opportunity to build relationships. For instance, there are members of the police force that come in, ACHD, ITD, the school district, transit, I'm talking about Compass and VRT, and then Mr. Cavanagh, City Council, but it also gives us an opportunity to build relationships with other participants in the community. So, as I have been wont to do over the last several years, and I've done the presentation, I haven't read from the official report. I bring what I call a little color commentary. It was suggested that I use a new shtick this year, so I worked on that, but in all seriousness, what we are asking is, can we take on a larger role? And I, for one, have said, I'm not here to make a decision, I'm here to make a recommendation if we can. And so, we just ask for that opportunity to expand our role and serve you. And as I acknowledged to the mayor earlier today, I serve at his pleasure and I serve at the council's pleasure. So, I understand my place in line. But in closing, I would say, it's been a great opportunity, it's been a learning experience, and it's fun to see the process and people bringing ideas forward and watching an idea form and be able to suggest a resolution. And it is a forum, it is an opportunity for the public to come in and hear something and maybe offer a suggestion and find a resolution. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer.
Thank you, David. And before we see if there's any questions from council, just don't let David sell himself short in terms of his expertise. I think that he's put more time personally into transportation in Meridian between the city and the chamber and other areas, so don't sell yourself short even to these people.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any questions at this point in time or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
Thank you, David, for your presentation this evening. As a city, we do have some commissions, specifically the Planning and Zoning Commission, that has quasi-judicial decision-making responsibilities. Are you asking that you have same type of decision-making within your commission?
Not at this point, but if that is the desire of the council within the legal parameters. Part of the discussion, Mr. Brent, a couple of sessions ago, I may have been a little too strong, but one of the commissioners says, we ought to be able to make decisions. And I go, no. As an administrative agency, that's not our call. We haven't been given that power. At this point, we're an advisory commission. But if the role is expanded and can work out within those limitations and without delaying the process, I mean, too many cooks spoil the soup.
Right, I get that.
But in some fashion, if we have an opportunity, because what I am focusing, when I talked about unintended consequences, if I can say this diplomatically, I think something gets missed, and it's not intentionally, but in the planning stage, something gets missed and after the fact, that problem comes to light. So, I'm saying if there is another set of eyes, and I'm relying upon some experience, and I'm pointing to that side of the dais where the traffic engineers sit, they will see some missions, and the youth commissioner sits over here, and I can recall at one instance when the youth commissioner raised his hand and said, here's the problem that didn't get solved. So, long answer to your question, if there is expanded role, we'd be happy to look at that and discuss if that is something that fits within the government, and not asking to delay the process and insert somebody else, put another nose under the tent, if I can use that expression.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Thank you very much. I'm curious if you think that the other folks on Transportation Commission would be interested in reviewing, if kind of what you're getting at is like reviewing development applications for potential issues, and perhaps advising planning staff if you see an issue with something ahead of time, if you all would have the capacity to do that. And then I'd also be curious, I was sitting in on one meeting where we were talking about this thorny issue around Hillsdale Elementary School and the safe crossing to school there. Do you think if you had some kind of limited authority, that there are certain small projects like safe crossings and so forth, that the Transportation Commission would be interested in tackling? I guess define, if you can, some ideas about what an expanded role would look like. I'd be interested to hear that, please.
Well, you've asked two questions there. The first one is, do you think I, do I think the other commissioners would take on, let's say, more responsibility, more work? And I can speak for one other member that was in the meeting with the mayor, so he said yes. I think generally from our conversations over the last year or two in the commission is they're saying, give us something more to work with. I think what comes with that, Ms. Strater, is that if you're asking for more work, there's more responsibility, and yes, it's going to take more time. So, I think the general answer is yes. And from that comment, I'm going to lead the discussion this coming Monday and talk about that. The second one that you mentioned is reviewing plans, again, within the limitations of legal At what stage do we look at it? There's some issues of, again, if it's an advisory capacity, you would be very early on in the process. One of the issues to talk about is we meet once a month, if you're going to look at plans or proposals, that may necessitate twice a month meeting. So, again, those are considerations, but your points are well taken. And I think I'll have to tell the commissioners, we ask for another bite at the apple or a bigger bite at the apple, and here's what we're willing, here's what they're willing to give us or maybe consider. You know, watch what you pray for because you might get it. But no, that expanded role would take on those considerations and in a heart-to-heart conversation with the other commissioners, if we're asking to do that, I think you have to understand that, yes, there would be more work, more responsibility.
Mr. Mayor, a quick follow-up.
Councilwoman Strater.
Some of the things I really struggle with when we get into these meetings about specific applications, I struggle with, you know, our parking requirements, sometimes people need something different from a street perspective on the width, and there are a lot of these little issues that keep, seem to be continuously coming up. And I do wonder if, speaking only for myself, obviously, but if that is something you guys would be interested in weighing in on, it would probably be a lot of work, but, you know, providing input the way that other agencies do, or even providing input when you see a problem, maybe not necessarily on everything, but if you see an issue, I would be interested to get that feedback because I feel like we have subject matter experts that certainly are well-versed in traffic, we have traffic engineers. I'd like to get that feedback from people if they see a fatal flaw with something or they think something's not making sense. I think it's better to know before we approve something versus trying to clean it up afterward.
And I think an overarching comment to that or response to that, we're not asking to take over someone else's responsibility or to second-guess, I mean, use P and Z by way of example, they review the plans. We're not asking to replace their consideration, their processes, we're just asking to bring another set of eyes, and we're not trying to overrule. So, and I appreciate the question.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Mr. Mayor, David, yeah, it's not often we get someone who wants to come up and say, we want longer meetings, so, you know. But I was looking at the Transportation Commission's kind of explanation of what they're about, and, you know, going through and reading from the document, this commission is a forum for transportation planning and project development, and advocates for and promotes the advancement of a safe, efficient, and multimodal transportation network relating to roads, transit corridors, bike lanes, sidewalks, pathways, and lighting. And then it gets into the makeup and all this stuff.
Right.
But that looks to me to be fairly broad.
Yes.
Everything, all things transportation-related that you guys can get into. So, I guess what you're asking for is expanded role, but working with other commissions, with planning and zoning, with the planning department, what, with that fairly broad mandate, how do you see that being structured? What are the ways that you would see that working?
We talked about that, again, at the 30,000-foot level this afternoon, and that may be on the early, or excuse me, on the front end of any proposal to look at those plans. Would we then be making a comment to staff? Would we later be making a recommendation to City Council? So, I don't know within the legal ramifications or the parameters of where we would fit into that process, if that's on the early end. Your question about visiting with other commissions, again, without stepping on toes or trying to overreach, it would complement saying, from this perspective and bringing our expertise, you may want to look at it. If I can use, by way of example, in the last commission meeting, there was a proposal to narrow down the traffic lanes to 10-foot travel lanes. You got to be careful so you don't step on toes. One of the engineers says, well, you can accomplish the same with an 11-foot travel lane, and you can redesign the width of the bike lane. And so, that has advocacy on both ends there. But that was something else brought to the process to say, there is another way to design that and accomplish what you want, both a bike line, bike lane, a pedestrian sidewalk, and a travel lane for traffic. So, it would be another comment to be considered. Now, that agency or that division, I'm not sure exactly where that would go. We do not have a city traffic engineer, but some of that overarching information to talk with those agencies or those divisions to say, here's something else you might consider.
Mr. Mayor, just to follow up.
Councilman Hoagland.
Comment, I'm never opposed to having more eyes look at things and weigh in, especially people who are in that field of reviewing what they're assigned for, and it's just a matter of how, what that looks like, how it works, and if that's, if it's feasible in not slowing up a process but keeping things flowing, but providing information, so.
Well, and Mr. Hoagland, that is, so my task was to come and ask if we could start that dialogue. And so, I think, if I may, we have started that dialogue. I'm not sure how it looks, where it goes, where we fit into it, but we appreciate the opportunity and look forward to the next conversation. So, the wheels are turning a bit, and somebody will say, well, I think you could fit here or fit here, and we'll work that out.
And if I could just add from our conversation a little bit, we do have a new planner focusing on transportation education. I think with that new position, when it comes online, it will provide some additional insight and time to be dedicated towards the transportation component. So, I think some of this will evolve, where we've even left it from our conversation today is, we're doing status quo and moving forward in terms of how the agendas are set, Caleb's responsible, those elements, but as we start bringing on these resources, what does that look like? But a good example was a conversation that we just had earlier during the workshop about Locust Grove, having them more involved in the phasing processes with the ACHD as a commission. You know, I don't know, the commission comes and presents to the Transportation Commission when they're doing road section improvements in Meridian. I don't think that's been something that has traditionally been on the, as part of the conversation, but maybe that's one element. So, really, there's two sides of the equation here. If there's something that you can think of that would be beneficial to you as a decision-maker from them, from what you've heard in your two months or two years or more, what would that be? And let's see if that makes sense. And they too will be looking at what makes sense from their standpoint, maybe when we bring somebody on, so maybe by summertime, we can have a more in-depth conversation about what that might look like.
Very good, thank you. No, work on getting your name right. Excuse me. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, David, appreciate it. Okay. Item 6A is a public hearing, continued from February 4th, 2020, for Sky Mesa Highlands by HHS Construction, that the applicant is requesting continuance. So, it looks like this has already been opened previously? Need to open it again? Okay, so with that, I will open this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We are on 6A, correct?
Correct.
The applicant did request continuance to March 10th in order to continue working with ACHD on development requirements.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Not seeing them. Was there anybody from the public who is here testifying this item today? Okay, with that, council, do I have any motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I would move that we continue the public hearing for Sky Mesa Highlands, H-2019-0123, to March 10th, 2020.
I have a motion, a second, to continue the application to March 10th, 2020. Say any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, applications continue. Item 6B is a public hearing for Eddington Commons, H-2019-019. I'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the next application is a request for annexation and zoning and a preliminary plat. This site consists of 13.49 acres of land, it's owned RUT in Ada County, and is located at 3610 North Linder Road, just north of West Eustick Road on the east side of North Linder Road. The comprehensive plan, future land use map designation, is medium-density residential, which calls for three to eight dwelling units per acre. The applicant is requesting annexation and zoning of 14.56 acres of land with an R-15 zoning district for the development of 92 single-family residential attached and detached units at a gross density of 6.83 units per acre, which is consistent with the medium-density residential future land use map designation. A preliminary plat is proposed, consisting of 92 building lots, 11 common lots, and four other lots on 13.49 acres of land in the R-15 district. The plat is proposed to develop in two phases, and the phasing line is shown here in the darker dashed line here. Access is proposed via North Linder Road and Arterial Street, with stub streets proposed to the east and south for future extension. Public streets are proposed for internal access, some with 27-foot wide street sections, which are reduced, which only accommodate parking on one side of the street. Four common driveways are proposed for access to homes off the public streets. To address staff's concerns pertaining to the amount of on-street parking available within the development with the narrow lots and reduced street sections, a parking exhibit was submitted, as shown depicting a total of 50 parking spaces for use by residents and guests, which should be adequate for the proposed development. A minimum of 10% qualified open space and one-site amenity is required to be provided for the development. The open space exhibit shown includes a couple of small areas that do not qualify, however the other areas shown comply with the minimum UDC standards. The Coleman lateral, which runs along the northern boundary of the site, is proposed to be piped. Site amenities are proposed in excess of the minimum standards as follows: a children's play structure, swing set, seating benches, climbing rocks, climbing dome, and pathways. The multi-use pathway proposed along the northern boundary of the site, adjacent to the Coleman lateral, complies with the pathway's master plan and will eventually extend to the east when the property redevelops to the existing pathway in Woodburne West, providing a connection to the on-street pathway along Linder Road for safe pedestrian access to the middle school to the north. The western portion of the pathway is proposed to extend to the north across the adjacent Sawtooth Middle School property, and that is shown on this exhibit right here. This is the little... This is the little segment that will be on the school district property. Photos of the attached and detached homes proposed to be constructed in this development were submitted, as shown on the right. All homes along the west perimeter boundary of the development, adjacent to Linder Road, and others, as depicted in red, are proposed to be a single-story in height. Building materials consist of a mix of siding, horizontal and vertical lap siding, and board and batten with stone veneer accents. The attached structures are required to comply with the design standards in the Architectural Standards Manual. For aesthetic reasons and to ensure consistency with the concept elevations originally submitted with this application, shown on the left, staff recommended a development agreement provision requiring all homes be constructed with minimum one-foot-wide fire-rated eaves on all four sides, consistent with previous commission and council direction on this matter. Although the commission preferred the appearance of eaves on homes because they are not required by the UDC or building code, they were hesitant to require such and removed staff's recommended condition requiring such. They requested city council address whether or not there should be a policy or code amendment requiring such on all homes in the city, or if it should just be a development agreement provision when and if determined appropriate. If council determines eaves should be required, Development Agreement Provision A1D in Section 8 should be reinstated. Summary of the commission public hearing. The commission did recommend approval to council. The following folks testified in favor: Heath Clark from Clark Wardle, the applicant's representative; Julian Domingo; Serena Ormsby Alvarez; Stave Yap Yap; Peng Cheng; Lauren Bailey; Justin Cranny from Holly Troxel, representing the Lester and Betty Vocal Trust; Dennis Green; and Tina Folden. No one testified in opposition of this application, and Stephen Lloyd commented. Written testimony was received from Whitney Montgomery; Kelly Woodhouse; Michelle Anderson; and Cheryl Garpetti, all homeowners in existing subdivisions by this developer. They are all in support. Letter from Lauren Bailey, the applicant, to Stephen and Andrea Lloyd, the property owners to the east, agreeing to limit the height of homes to a single-story adjacent to their property on lots 20 and 23 through 26, block 1. Jake Centers, Black Rock Homes; Justin Cranny; Holly Troxel, representing Lester and Betty Vocal Trust; and Heath Clark, the applicant's representative, stating that he is in agreement with the commission's recommendation. Key issues of discussion by the commission are as follows: the possibility of floating the mixed-use designation on the property to the south, to the southern portion of this property, and adding a commercial or multifamily component to enlarge the mixed-use area and provide a transition and integration of uses from the residential to the future commercial uses to the south. Staff recommendation for four-sided eaves and a cohesive color scheme to be provided for the overall development, featuring a minimum of two field colors, a trim color and an accent color or unique material, and garage doors coinciding with this scheme or other accents. The provision of an emergency access to the site that meets fire department requirements. The location of the micro path along the east side of the site, providing a connection between the multi-use pathway and the common driveway, and it not being visible from the public street, creating police surveillance concerns. And I'll just back up here and show you that real quick. It's a little pathway right here. There is a condition in the staff report that requires that that pathway be relocated in this vicinity right here. The availability of on-street parking for guests and whether or not reduced street sections should be allowed and their impact on on-street parking. The provision and alignment of a 10-foot-wide multi-use pathway and qualified open space along the northern boundary of the site and location of existing easements. And finally, the impact of the development on area school enrollment, which is currently overcapacity, and the school district's request for no homes in this development to be occupied until 2021, which Pleasant View will be open and the cap on Hunter Elementary will be lifted. The commission made a couple changes to the staff recommendation. They struck condition A1C, which requires a cohesive color scheme to be used for the overall development, featuring a minimum of two field colors, a trim color and an accent color or unique material with garage door colors coinciding with this scheme or other accents. Designer view should not be required for single-family detached homes. And strike condition A1D, which requires minimum one-foot-wide fire-rated eaves to be constructed on all four sides of homes within the development. There are a couple outstanding issues for council tonight. The commission would like direction from the council as to whether or not there should be a policy requiring four-sided eaves to be constructed on homes within the city. The commission generally preferred the appearance of eaves on homes, but because they aren't required by building code or city code, they were hesitant to require them through the development agreement. If council determines eaves should be required, DA Provision A1D in Section 8 should be reinstated. And finally, the commission recommended for council to consider if the development, as proposed, provides an adequate transition to the mixed-use designated parcel to the south, approved to develop with commercial uses, and what could be done about making sure the commercials piece doesn't get blocked in. And I'll just flip to that map real quick to show you what's been conceptually approved on that property to the south. Looks like there's a gas station, fuel island, retail commercial space, and a bank. Only a stub street is proposed to the south, and the back of homes face that property currently. There is no mix or integration of uses proposed. Was something that the commission spent a lot of time discussing when the Alpina Town Homes came in previously on this property was the integration with the property to the north. The commission recommendation, again, was approval with the requirement of a development agreement per the amended provisions in the staff report. There has been no written testimony since the commission hearing, except for the applicant's response that he is in agreement with the commission recommendation. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonya. Do I have any questions for Sonya at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Sonya, what year was that conceptual plan approved for the Sugarman property?
Um...
Was the development agreement on that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perrow, I do not remember offhand. I think that was dated from '13. The applicant, actually, applicant's representative, Lauren Bailey, actually worked on that project. He can probably tell you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Burke.
Sonya, can you please explain to me what the concern is with the commercial property to the south and how it might be possibly blocked in?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Burke, Councilwoman, I can't explain to you exactly what they meant by that. That was the commission's words, not mine. But I think it was more there being a public street access to this site and the backs of homes facing the future commercial development, and just not a lot of, you know, integration in uses.
Mr. Mayor, follow up.
Councilwoman Burke.
After reading the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing, I know that there was issues with transition, but I'm trying to figure out how, what the concern is with it being blocked in.
Like I said, it's their words, not mine. I'm not sure what they're, what they meant by that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scherer.
Thank you. I apologize. I'm trying to get one in. What is the percentage of qualified minimum open space? I read in the staff report that it is not adequate. What is the exact percentage, please?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, it is adequate. It does meet our minimum standards. The original analysis did not, and they have made their recommended changes to the plans that staff asked for. So now they do comply with that. The qualified open space exhibit shows that it is 13.47 acres, roughly 15%. Excuse me, not 13, that's the area of the site. 2.02 acres, 15% of the site. There, like I said, there are a couple areas that the applicant's shown on their plan that, like these entry strips here, that do not count towards a qualified open space, but the area that does count does meet and exceed the UDC standards.
Mr. Mayor, a follow up.
Councilwoman Scherer.
I'm trying to figure out from the, what we count as qualified open space or usable open space, what the percentage is. So would that approximate 15% include these small areas you're indicating here that, in your opinion, don't meet the definition? Take a couple minutes if you need to to calculate it.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Scherer, council, I don't know what that area is. I did ask the applicant to remove that from their exhibit, but they did not. So they may know better than I do an approximate percentage without those areas.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Perrow, I just looked up the Sugarman development agreement. It was 2014.
Thank you.
I was wondering if, with the mayor's permission, I might speak to the commission's concerns, having chaired the commission at the time that these hearings were happening, if that's okay. We had heard that Alpine Town Homes application three different times. They came back with different versions of design for that four acres, roughly four acres that sits to the south. And the concern was that that four acres is too small to develop into the use that is intended on the comprehensive plan. That applicant, they were looking to do townhomes. Of course, there's a variety of different things that could be, could be put in there. But the main issue that we were coming across was being able to get access from two arterial roads in an appropriate location. The access from the arterial roads was really limited. So because it's just such a small piece of property, it was very hard for, it's not going to matter what you put on there, it's going to be very hard to access because of the shape and the size. And so every time that the applicant came to us on that Sugarman property, when the applications were presented, we encouraged them to go to the neighbors to the north, which is our applicant this evening, and the neighbors to the east, to talk with them about developing that entire corner in a uniform way, and really encourage them to do a mixed use. And so in all three of those hearings that we had on the Planning and Zoning Commission, all of the representatives from the, from the listing agents to the owners of all of those properties were present at at least one of those hearings and were aware that that was what the commission was recommending to, was recommending to all the property owners of those three parcels. So the concern really lay in accessibility, that four-acre piece. We didn't have conversation, of course, at that time with transitioning from this four-acre piece to the 13-acre piece we're hearing this evening because we didn't have an application for the 13-acre piece yet. But there was some conversation about what that would look like. And so I don't know what has transpired from that point in time. The owner of the 13-acre piece to the north was, was still marketing that property, and I assume has since sold. So what's happened since then, what I can say is that the commission, that's what they're trying to communicate. They're still concerned about the size of that four-acre piece, the 13-acre piece to the north, and being able to integrate that whole corner. It also creates challenges for the eight-acre piece to the east. But if that applicant hasn't presented any comment on this application, or if that owner hasn't presented any, any issue, then that's, that was their choice to do so. So I hope that helps.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, questions for staff?
Sonya, do you happen to know what the distance is from Linder Road to the entrance for the Sugarman property? And it looks like that road is straight that goes through the commercial and into the residential.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, I'm sorry, I do not. To the northern bound, or to the access on Linder? Right here? Is that what you're asking?
What I'm asking, Mr. Mayor, and Sonya, is the distance from Linder Road going back east to the entrance to the commercial property, yes?
I'm sorry, I do not know, and I can't scale this right here, so.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, it's just, it is hard to tell.
And the applicant's representative may be able to tell you that.
I just want to make certain that if you're heading east and you want to turn into the commercial subdivision or into the residential part, are you in a turn lane, trying to turn, a left turn lane that's going east? Or are you, how far are you beyond that? On this scale, it shows the turn lane turning right is just after that. The closer that these entrances are to intersections, we all know the busier it gets and the more complicated it is and, and things like that. So I'm just concerned about that. I do have a question for staff, another question, Sonya, and that is, in this, it talks about Coleman laterals proposed to be piped, but they are going to put in a pathway on, on the northern boundary of that. So there'll be access to it, but it is piped. I just want to make sure that I read that correctly.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, council, the applicant did confirm to me that it will be, both sections of it will be piped. There's a short segment right here, and then there was also kind of a separated segment right here, and he confirmed that they would both be piped.
Thank you.
Do I have any other questions for staff at this time? Then I will ask the applicants, please come forward. Set your name and address for the record, please.
Members of the council, excuse me, Heath Clark, 251 East Front Street in Boise, with a law firm of Clark Wardle, representing the applicant. And Sonya, could you bring up that PowerPoint when you have a second? Okay. So we are here before you tonight with a medium-density development that's near major traffic corridors. It's intended like other projects that this builder does for high-quality, low-maintenance product, often for empty nesters and small families. I want to emphasize a couple of things about it. The R-15 zoning that's been proposed complies with the medium-density comprehensive plan designation, and the design of the project fully complies with R-15 in turn. So in other words, we are in conformance with the comprehensive plan designation. We have requested no variances from the zoning that has been identified. A couple of items I'd also point out, as Sonya mentioned, we have self-imposed a few things, including these, the pink lots are limited to a single-story. We've done a large half-acre park. We've gone well over on the required amenities, providing five where only one is required. We have provided what, in our view, is 15% open space, but Councilmember Scherer, even if you take out that area that you've identified, which is give or take maybe 7,000 or 8,000 square feet, we're still well above the minimums. And I think importantly, to date, and I don't want to, I don't know who's here tonight, but to date, we've had very little and to no opposition. This has been a fairly straightforward progress, process that just required some, some conversations with P&amp;Z to get over a couple of items. So as Sonya mentioned, our parking, and I do want to clarify this, our parking does exceed code. We have four parking spots per residence and 50 on-street parking spaces. And we had a meeting with Deputy Chief Bonjourno, and it's been approved by FIRE. There is, I understand, it is no issue on the staff level with regard to the adequacy of the parking plan. Also wanted to follow up on the regional pathway. This, you can see with the red arrow, points to the regional pathway. That location has been approved by planning staff and by parks. We are in agreement with the condition language that's been proposed by staff. I did want to just clarify one item, just in case there was a question in anyone's mind. I think Sonya mentioned that this does go on to the Sawtooth Middle School property. We've discussed that with West Ada School District. Their staff is on board with that. In order to finalize that, we have to go in front of their trustees, but we can't go in front of their trustees until we have an approval at Meridian. So it's a little bit of a chicken and the egg element. But we will be coordinating that process if we're fortunate enough to get an approval. And we obviously would coordinate and install the improvements on, on that site. I also wanted to talk about schools. Of course, you know, this has been a topic that's come up quite a bit lately. Before I talk about that, I think it's important to keep in mind how long it takes to get these projects done. So obviously, right now, we're at the preliminary plat stage. After we finish this preliminary plat, we still have to come back and get a final plat approved. Once, that's going to take several months. Once we do the, in order to record the final plat, we have to install street improvements, do all that sort of thing. So the timing of this is such that we won't have residents until 2021, and very few at that. You know, we will still be at the beginning of the sale of this project. And so given that, you know, we've discussed with West Ada what their timing is. At that point, Oaihe High School will be online, as you guys are all very well aware. At that point, Oaihe High School will be online, as you guys are all very well aware. Also, the Pleasant View Elementary will also be online. What that means is that the planning that the school district has done to match your city's comprehensive planning is working, that, you know, these schools will be coming online as the residents will be arriving. You know, one other issue that I would point out there, too, and I think it's kind of important to keep in mind, is that this is a different type of product than you might typically see in a Meridian subdivision. This is dense product. These are smallish homes. They're intended for empty nesters. They're intended for, you know, starter homes. You're not talking about homes that are typically going to have the five, six children in them. And in fact, when we've done surveys of our other projects, we've found that the number of students is, give or take, approximately half of what's generally developed or generally generated in these types of subdivisions. And many of those students come from within the district already. So, we think that there's a good plan here and that the schools is very much adequately addressed. So, as I mentioned, or as Sonya mentioned, we are in agreement with the planning and zoning recommendation, which it would be awesome if I could just drop the mic right now and turn around and walk away and tell you that's great. But there are these other points of conversation. I guess it was just too good to be true. So, I want to go over these two items that Sonya discussed with you. So, the first one is this, the transition to the property on the south. And with regard to that, I do want to make a couple of quick points. That site does have an approved plan. The development agreement for that Sugarman commercial subdivision was signed in 2016. So, it's recent. It has a commercial entitlement. That commercial entitlement includes accesses onto Linder Road and Eustick. We think there'd probably be a stub that's required to the east when the east property develops. So, in terms of blocking it in, we just don't see that as happening, to answer your question, Councilmember Burnt. With regard to the question of transition, which I think is the second point that was raised, we've provided, as you can see here where I'm pointing, a wall of dense homes. And we think that density is the best way to transition between these two products, or projects. If you run a density calculation for this area that I'm kind of circling here, you're looking at about 11, or, excuse me, about nine units per acre, so from our east boundary over to Linder. If you were to replace that with, say, fourplexes, you would only actually end up with about six and a half units per acre, because you would have to put in internal parking and you'd have to put in sidewalks. So, in fact, you end up with more open area between the two projects if you were to do fourplexes than you would with what we've proposed. You also have, you know, the comp plan designation for this area is medium-density, which means you go three to eight units per acre. So, you know, you'd be working against that cap as well. And then, the final point I would make with regard to that is the comprehensive plan. You know, we've been hearing for the last couple of years, you know, I've got a couple familiar faces, and then we've got some new faces, but we've been hearing for the last couple of years that, you know, hey, the comp plan designation, we need to respect it, you know, let's stick with it. We just went through a comp plan process just a few months ago. This property stayed the same during that process. No, there was not a change to either our property or the property to the south, which we don't control. So, you know, from our perspective, you know, given what we can control, we think that we've done a good job of trying to transition to that property. The next point I would make is that we have been in discussions with the neighbors to the south, and they approved the connection point to our property. You know, they have not indicated any objection to what we're trying to do here. So, you know, while we appreciate the concerns, for sure, and we want to make sure that the planning that the city does can play out, we think that we've done what should be expected of us here, given the comprehensive planning and the zoning ordinances that are in effect at the time of our application. Then the last thing, and I'll just, I'm just calling this the uncodified design standard question. As a reminder, and I think we're just talking about eaves, but as a reminder, there's no design review for single-family detached buildings or residences in Meridian. You know, staff has pointed out that additional standards can be imposed using a development agreement, but they still need to have some sort of a nexus to the property. They still can't be arbitrary. So, staff's talked about having a, what I'll quote, "policy" for four-sided eaves. And as a preliminary matter, I do want to say that this builder, which is Black Rock Homes, does install eaves on the front and the back of the homes. The eaves on the front wrap around about four feet. So, we're not talking about the fronts or the back. They do use eaves on the sides where it faces streets. Really, what we're talking about is in those kind of tight areas between buildings, whether they should be required to include eaves in those locations. The justification that we've heard is for aesthetic as well as drainage reasons, and that's from the staff report. But to be clear, from a drainage perspective, there's not a drainage problem without eaves. Oops, let me go back. The International Building Code does not require eaves. That's because drainage is addressed by fine grating at the base of the building. You know, water doesn't fall straight down. A one-foot eave isn't going to keep water off the walls. And this is totally tongue-in-cheek, but I included a picture here of that Geico house with the snow globe on it. That's about what you'd need to keep the water off the sides of the building. You know, a one-foot eave isn't going to address that. So, if it's not for drainage, it's got to be for aesthetics. And aesthetics are obviously in the eye of the beholder. The UDC doesn't have a standard that requires eaves, and there are many common architectural styles that don't include eaves. So, you know, Cape Cod and southwestern Adobe, I've included pictures here, they don't have eaves. And so, what we're asking for is for the council ultimately not to micromanage the process. We have these pictures that I've shown on here. You know, this is what the product looks like. We can't build it fast enough to keep up with the demand, and each of these homes are 100% within code. They include eaves on the front, back, and otherwise where appropriate. And I, we're asking you to leave it at that rather than asking to make subjective design decisions. So, with that, I'll wrap up. Again, you have a project before you with 92 residential lots, and we're in agreement with all the conditions of approval that P&amp;Z has recommended. The biggest question tonight should be, does this meet code? And if it does, it should be approved without imposing new uncodified design requirements. And this is the point, you know, Councilmember Burnt, Councilmember Borton have seen me do this a number of times. I usually put up the slide now that says, here are the changes that we want to the conditions of approval, and this is the point where I get to go, none. So...
Was that timed?
That was timed. No, it wasn't timed. With that, Members of the council, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Council, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
Thank you very much for all of the individuals here that represent the applicant. We really appreciate the pathway that you're going to put in at the staff's request. That's fantastic. We're trying to get that pathway connected across the city as fast as we can, and every participant that helps us with that, we really appreciate. So, I wanted to say that first. Secondly, in the application, there was a statement by the applicant that said that they're asking for an R-15 zone due to dimensions versus density. And so, I wanted you to elaborate on that a little bit for us. Does that mean that setbacks are more narrow? Obviously, it sounds like your density is somewhere around just under seven units an acre. So, could you elaborate on that for me?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Perro, the answer is yes. I think you've nailed it. The density falls within either an R-8 or an R-15, but we went with the R-15 to allow for the smaller setbacks. It's still within the limits of the medium-density designation.
Is that three foot on either side of the property line, the interior setbacks?
Yes. Councilmember Perro, that's correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Could you give us a feel for the price point these homes serve, or even just like a discount to the market average, if you believe that this meets somewhat a definition of having more affordable housing stock?
Councilmember Strater... So, Councilmember Strater and my clients will yell at me if I misunderstood the hand signals, but this is a $300,000 and lower price point, which is something that is just desperately needed in Meridian, and they're the number-one builder within that price point.
Mr. Mayor, a quick follow-up.
Councilwoman Scher.
Could you get a little more granular on the timeline of when each phase of your project will be delivered and why you feel this will not necessitate a timing restriction in terms of, you know, you've heard loud and clear, we have a ton of concerns about school overcrowding. Could you just maybe address that a little more from a timeline perspective?
Yeah, Councilmember Strater, so the, we are currently at the preliminary plat phase. We...
Go ahead.
Councilmember Strater, I just got a little more detail for that. So, we're still at the preliminary plat phase. We still have to get our final plat. We don't anticipate that we would be able to pave this before the snow flies in '20. It's anticipated it would be July of 2021. So, that's when we would be looking at folks being able to, you know, being well under construction and having homes for sale after that point. Just to clarify that, so, I think what I said was compressing the timeline for actually building the homes. So, it's July of 2021 for paving, and then we're under construction for the homes, so several months after that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Burnt.
So, to clarify, what you're saying is, is that you are going to start construction of these homes after July of 2021?
Councilmember Burnt, that's correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Hoagland.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Clark, if we could go back to the slide, I think where they say a picture's worth a thousand words, that helps me where you had both the commercial and the residential showing. There we go. Because I think that answered my concern, because when looking at the residential portion and seeing that street come, and then seeing the commercial separately and thinking they were lined up, I was having concerns, because I thought there's no way where that Northwest 15th compared to Linder Road would allow adequate ingress and egress coming if you're headed east. But I see it is offset and it's moved down, so that takes care of my concern there. I did have a question regarding that space that you showed with the bank, and then to the north, there's parking, and then an open space. Is that just open space, green space? There's not going to be a structure there that we know of.
Councilmember Hoagland, the answer to that question is that it's not property that we control, and so I don't know whether there would be, you know, exactly what would be used on that. I think the larger point that we were trying to make is just, these, our neighbors do have an approved project with an active development agreement on it.
Good, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Clark. And just a little bit further, and I know you don't control that aspect, and it could be that that becomes an egress to development that occurs to the east. It does, having a family situation where a property backs up to a commercial, and restaurants have gone in, and trucks park, and it harms the values of some of these homes when you do that, when you don't have a buffer. I mean, it's, just so you go into this with your eyes wide open, I don't doubt that, but that does have issues. As to the eaves, for me, you've got eaves in the front, you've got the wraparound, and to me, it seems like when you have those narrower setbacks, I mean, it allows, and I don't know if the fire department wants to weigh in, but I would assume that would help for, if you've got to go up a ladder in between houses, you've got more room to do that without eaves. So, if you need to access a window or something, but that's not my area of expertise, but I don't have an issue with the eaves. The wraparound, when you drive by, you don't really notice eaves on the side, so that's not an issue for me, so...
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for the applicant at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Heath, I only have a couple of questions. And I thought this is a good example, this project, of some things we're trying to do with open space with its proximity to the school and the school site and the ability... It's not a city park, I understand, but it is available open space, which is somewhat unique and a benefit for these residents. I don't know if I'm capturing what's intended with, is that the emergency access in the southwest corner to Linder Road?
You're talking about this, Councilmember Borton? Yes. Yes, so that is the, one of the conversations that we've had below was, we're not going to be able to get above, and I don't remember the number of lots, without having our secondary access. And so, that lot would, is it that one, Lauren, or is it two up? That lot would be an interim emergency access until this property to the south develops and were conditioned accordingly.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Then to follow that through, what happens to that emergency access? Does it get removed, greened up, and become open space?
Councilmember Borton, that can become a home again at that point.
Could be or will be, is that decided yet?
It would be. Once we have the secondary access resolved, then we intend to develop that as a home.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
That first blush that strikes me is a little odd to have perhaps a single-family home, you know, adjacent to what'll be probably cars skewed up, turning right and left, in and out of a gas station, as opposed to being perhaps some buffer with some landscaping. I know it's a lot, but it's, I had assumed it might have been greened up. The other question, if I could, is the comments on the eaves, and I think eaves apply and should apply everywhere, and with some exception, but I really subscribe to their value, one, two, or three feet, and better than nothing, and throwing water away. And I've just seen, and you probably have in other circumstances, as homeowners who deal with some of the weather and water rot that can happen. So, I think eaves do certainly serve a purpose, which I thought you would, to challenge you about, I thought you would argue that eaves do have a great value, but in some circumstances, and an R-15 is a great example, where you've got reduced setbacks, dimensional standards sort of negate the value and utility of the eave. And it's the R-15 which makes the side eaves not warranted, as opposed to eaves don't serve a valuable purpose to the home itself. I think they do, and R-4 and R-8, I would love to see us develop, for everyone's benefit, an actual standard to confirm they should be anywhere they can truly function. But I do, and I assume that might be where you were going, is R-15, and these unique setbacks create the unique circumstance which warrants excluding them here.
Councilmember Borton, I like the nuanced lawyer argument, you know, and I appreciate the point that you're making. I think the larger point is that we as a city and we as the development community coming in before you with applications should know what we're up against, and we shouldn't be coming up with new design requirements that aren't, don't have a basis in the code. The point I would take issue with in terms of your argument there is that the International Building Code doesn't require eaves for a reason, and it's because they really don't serve that function. You know, they really are more aesthetic than anything. We don't have eaves on commercial buildings. We don't have eaves on Cape Cod's. You know, there's a lot of instances when they're not required, and I think it would be a little heavy-handed and, I think, over-engineering the process to say that they just need to be there all the time. But your point on the R-15 is well-taken. But your point on the R-15 is well-taken, and I think we're saying largely the same thing there, is that where Black Rock tends not to use these is in the narrow areas between the homes, where you can't see them anyway, so it's just wasted expense, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
I don't know if this is a question for the applicant or for staff, but it's my understanding that this property to the south, that's just the conceptual design that's approved with the development agreement, and that isn't an actual plan that's in construction or in development at this time. So, since we don't know when that's going to come about, I agree with Councilmember Burton's concern about what happens with that lot, because if they don't develop that for several years, is the builder going to come back and finish that one property out? Do you have any thoughts on that?
Councilmember Pearl, if I understand the point that you're making, as we're looking at that, you know, we don't control the property to the south. All we can do is look at it and say, hey, there is a plan that's been approved, and this is the site plan that was approved and is attached to that development agreement. So, they're allowed to go forward with these uses. And so, I, you know, whether they would want to modify the site plan, we'd all be speculating, but all we know is based on what's there, that they can move forward with that. Oh, that's a good point. And Lauren just reminded me that this is an approved final plat down there, so there's not an expiration on it, so it wouldn't timeout either, so.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up. I guess maybe I didn't ask my question as clearly. Is the applicant planning on, let's say that they don't actually, since there is no expiration, which I understand, it's part of the DA, if nothing happens there for quite a few years, is the applicant planning on coming back later and putting a residence there? Or is that going to be left as open space? I mean, Councilmember Burton already asked that question, and I, I'm asking for, really for a safety reason in addition to, I'm not as concerned about the aesthetics, but I agree that I have a safety concern about whether that's used for pedestrian use, or whether it's going to be right next to a commercial in and out.
Councilmember Pearl, the applicant has agreed to a condition of approval that says that we have to use that as a secondary access until such time
Okay.
as that we have another secondary which would come through our neighbors to the south. So, it will be a temporary access until somebody comes along and does something down there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Strater.
Just to pile on a little bit, while we're in an open discussion, so you'll have an opportunity to respond, I tend to agree very strongly with the point raised by my fellow council members, that having a home, I think it's Lot 22, sort of just facing this commercial development, not ideal, and could create a safety concern, certainly creates an aesthetic concern, imagining the odd chance that there's a kid living in that house, there's just no buffer, they're right next to a future road. I'm struggling a little bit with that one. I commend the pathway, I commend the meeting of the open space requirement, glad that you guys did that. This is one of my probably remaining concerns.
Councilmember Strater, I appreciate, I don't know if there was a question there, but the points that I would make would just be that we are in excess of the open space requirements, and we're comfortable that that would be a marketable lot with appropriate fencing, you know, in the event that it, that there is a secondary access and that's allowed to be redeveloped for a home.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up.
Councilmember Strater.
If this was, if this ended up being a condition of approval, I mean, are you open to that change? Because, I mean, we'll have an opportunity, once we close our discussion, to talk about how important it is to the rest of council, but I'd like to understand the applicant's position on that.
Councilmember Strater, you're asking if we would agree to a condition of approval, that that would be permanently open space? I think the answer is that I'd be happy to talk about it with my clients. I have a hard time seeing the code basis to take away the lot when we're already in excess of the open space requirements, and so, sorry?
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up. You know, the UDC and code are very important, and I understand that that's the letter of the law, but, right, our comprehensive plan speaks very specifically to the importance of transition, and so I would just caution you that I tend to take a wider view of our role in terms of what considerations we have holistically, not just the letter of the UDC or meeting a specific requirement, but integrating your project into the community really well. I feel like you're doing that great on one part of your property with the pathway. I have some concerns about this particular lot here, having a home right there, not even the back of a home. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Burton.
Is this subdivision going to be similar to that of Verrato, I'm assuming?
Councilmember Burton, yes.
All right, so that's what I thought. So, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that when we spoke about Verrato last year, that we, I believe that it was presented that originally, that the homes wouldn't have eaves, and we switched it to eaves because of the same arguments that we were talking about tonight. So, with that said, knowing that that precedent was set in that subdivision, this subdivision meaning similar, why no eaves, knowing that we had requested eaves on a similar subdivision in the past?
Councilmember Burton, so I wasn't at that hearing, but I know that that is correct, that that was requested by the city. In this case, you know, I think it's fair to bring it up again and ask the question whether it makes sense, and in this case, we still believe it doesn't. And, you know, in the time since then, it's not become a code requirement, it's not a design requirement, there is no design review for single-family detached homes. So, you know, that is the, it's the most I would say to that, is that, you know, I don't think it made sense then, it doesn't make sense now.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up.
Councilmember Burton.
I like this model. I like, you know, it's, the city of Meridian, I believe that we need this type of diversity in housing. I think that there are folks that need this price point, especially, we all know where the market is and where it's going. Homes are expensive, and they're getting to be more expensive, and so, see this price point and this diversity in housing, I think makes a lot of sense. I've seen homes where there's no eaves on the side, I just don't like it. I really don't, I just don't like the look of it. I know Black Rock does, you know, and I'm not picking on anyone, Jake, I'm not picking on anyone, but I feel like, you know, I know Black Rock does some construction down in Boise, in Harris Ranch, and all of those homes that are similar to this have eaves. So, I'm wondering why in Meridian we don't get home, I mean, and I don't, this is not a sword to die on, I'm just, I'm trying to like figure it out, like, I just want to know.
Councilmember Burton, I think when you said I just don't like it, that kind of hit the rub of it, that, you know, this is, you know, what we're talking about is product that looks good, that sells very well. Well, the product that we're talking about at Harris Ranch is probably twice, twice as expensive as this?
Expensive.
You know, and in this case, you know, we make decisions to try to make sure that we're hitting a price point for folks, and, you know, the, being able to do some extra upfront, rather than having to spend it on eaves on the sides that nobody's ever going to see and doesn't really serve a function, that makes a heck of a lot of sense for a lot of our home buyers.
Follow-up, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Burton.
So, basically, this is the numbers and cents, really, not necessarily aesthetics, or not necessarily, not necessitating eaves because of water or such, this is merely, this is saving us money on this house so that we can put that, those funds toward a different part of the house, is that what your argument is?
Councilmember Burton, it's all of the above, you know, that does allow us to do some extra things for home buyers, but really, you know, the reason we're having this conversation with you in this forum is, is, sorry?
Excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt, Mr. Mayor, follow-up. I don't mean to make light, but I feel like this, it's a little bit silly, you know, we're talking about eaves, you know, to a certain degree, but I like how it looks, you know, I'm not a home builder like Black Rock, or I don't have the expertise like other developers like Mr. Conger does, so by no means am I a material expert on this matter, but I, I've drove past.
Okay.
You can agree to disagree.
And maybe that's what has to happen, but the point that I would make, and you mentioned, hey, you know, these guys have great expertise in building these homes, they do, and the city should allow them to exercise that expertise, rather than dictating some of these items.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Strater.
Just a chime in with two cents. I don't think it's the role of city council to get too into the details on the aesthetic aspects of the project personally. You know, you should select the paint colors you think will sell, and that's your decision, and I hope you figured out whether eaves will work or not for people. I do think when we do our district areas, that is the appropriate time where we can bring in the architectural standards that are appropriate for each area. Like, that to me is a time that would make a lot of sense to look at holistically, what are the standards, right, as opposed to kind of like picking on, you know, there's one particular application in front of us and kind of getting too worked up about it, I'd rather focus on the high-level issues personally of just, you know, we've got massive school overcrowding, we have an applicant that has met the open space requirement, and I, you know, that's just my two cents.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
I do want to talk briefly, I noticed one of the key decisions, that the micropath on the east side, if we can jump back to one of the maps that had that, it was in the back, because I think the police department had a comment on that, being that it was, was it hidden, in fact, Lieutenant Brown, if you wouldn't mind commenting on that, was that because it was just a, it was hard to view, to be open, this is, would be in the top-left corner beyond, yeah, right there? Is that, was the concern that the police department had, do you recall?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Holton, I'm not exactly sure what, when that discussion point was brought up.
Councilmember Holton, I could jump in. So, the, this was a matter of discussion, and sometimes the way the staff report is drafted and updated makes this a little confusing. So, this was discussed below, we had placed that there, in part because our neighbor had asked us to put it there so they could have a little bit more separation. We, at the last hearing, discussed this, and we have agreed to the condition of approval that says that it would be relocated, so that'll happen in connection with our final plat.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Clark.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
I wanted to thank Mr. Centers for his drone photos for the, regarding the parking in the current Verrato development, and I'm curious how, as a community, that is generally handled, we're constantly having discussions about parking concerns citywide, our code enforcement is always sharing those concerns with us. So, just out of curiosity, tell us how you guys have done a great job with keeping those roads clear, and, you know, just curious about that. It's not a technicality, it's not a comment on the application, I'm just wondering what methods you guys have used.
Councilmember Pearl, I put up a couple of the photos that Mr. Centers had provided. There's not really any behavioral control going on here, it's not a CCNR issue. Really what it comes down to is that the project has provided for four onsite spaces, and this is the same type of a design, plus, you know, the on-street, but, you know, what we find is that these are, you know, the starter home, the empty nester types, you know, you're not hosting the Super Bowl party at these houses, and, you know, you don't have a ton of, you're not going to have 50 people showing up for your Super Bowl party in one of these houses, they're small houses. So, you're not going to have the type of activity that you might see in a lot of other places. We've, you know, we took these photos over the course of, I think it was over a week, we tried to take them at times when folks would be home, and we were finding that there was very little issues with on-street parking, you know, based on the design of the project. You know, I'd also point out, you know, ACHD and all the cities have worked together to come up with this reduced street section, the 27-foot street section with parking on one side. It's, you know, it's an important thing at ACHD to try to reduce these maintenance costs, and it is functioning, and you can see in our projects, it's been functioning well.
Are there any further questions for the applicant at this time? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, this is a public hearing. Did anyone sign up to testify on this application?
Mr. Mayor, there were four sign-ins, only one indicated they wished to testify, and that's Tina Folden.
If you would come forward and please state your name and address for the record, please. And you have three minutes.
My name's Tina Folden, I live at 2241 East Camay Drive in Verrato Sub in Meridian. First, off of my notes, I didn't even know if I had eaves on my house or not, I had to ask, because I was looking at it, and I don't know, I guess to me, it doesn't make a difference, it didn't, it didn't to me. Anyway, it's my understanding that Eddington Commons will offer a similar housing style to Verrato, and that is something I support. I just passed my one-year anniversary, and I love my home and love the Verrato neighborhood. I chose Black Rock Homes and the Verrato community because of the quality of the home and the location. I've heard a question about parking has come up, and I want to share that I have not experienced any issues with parking. I knew the parking situation before I bought, and actually appreciate the fact that not a lot of extra cars can be parked to clutter the streets, so this was positive. Before I purchased my home, I looked around, I had several other communities, but chose Verrato because of location and orderly, uniform way in which the homes are designed. They're a bit close, but on the plus side, it doesn't allow further accumulation of additional junk and such that I saw in some of the other neighborhoods. CCNRs are enforced, and I believe this neighborhood concept works, subdivision is clean and highly maintained. Thank you for your consideration and supporting these types of neighborhoods.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, and it's City Council. This is my first opportunity to have a chance to speak before you, and I appreciate it.
If you can state your name and address for the record.
Pardon me?
If you can state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Dennis Green, I live at 2185 East Sharp Tail Street in Meridian, best city in the United States, and it's located between, off of Yusick, just like this proposed development, between Eagle Road and Locust Grove. Couple of things I wanted to talk to, I've lived there for two years. Affordability was one of my criteria when I was out looking for a home. Black Rock not only offered an affordable home, but the quality was incredible for the price point, as well as the size of the home, it's a couple thousand square feet, and for a single, I guess I'm now an empty nester, it's quite adequate for me. In terms of parking, I've been there for two years, never been an issue, I've seen a couple Super Bowls, a couple Christmases, some other holidays. There's 28 houses on my street, and we have comfortably, easily 30 to 40 parking spaces. Now, I could elaborate and say, well, we could park in front of the driveways, we could park in the driveways, and if I go 40 yards down the street around the corner, there's probably an additional 40 other parking spaces, so it's never, ever been an issue, and I don't see where it would be. And having learned tonight that I'm eve-less, I want to let you know that it's not a concern, and it does not distract from the quality or the beauty of that development, so. Any questions I can answer for you, being a resident?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for this opportunity.
Is there anybody else who'd like to testify at this time? Okay. Would the applicant like to come forward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Heath Clark, 251 East Front Street in Boise. Sonya, can I have the slideshow back? So Councilmember Schrader, I just discussed your question with my clients and we came up with a possible solution that I think might address yours and Councilmember Borton's concern. You know, one option would be to relocate this pathway to the other side of the temporary access. I don't think we would have a block length issue because I think it's 700 feet and we would have, it would be, we're guessing it would be about 500 feet would be the ultimate length. So, you know, my suggestion would be to direct us to work with staff on looking at relocating that pedestrian access to provide an additional buffer. And then if we do run into a block length issue or any other complication in the code, then we can sort that out with them. But hopefully that would address the concerns that have been expressed. And happy to answer any other questions.
Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
At first blush, it looks like doing that to compress the lots to the north still would require, it'd be one lot less.
Councilmember Borton, it wouldn't mean any fewer lots. You'd just take this pathway and relocate it down here and shift these up. But if the goal is to provide, you know, a landscaping-type buffer from the residences, then that would do it.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up question.
Councilman Schrader.
So would the plan then be to provide the temporary fire access in the same location and then I guess you'd have another, I guess, do we sacrifice the fire access, I guess, then would be my question by doing that?
Councilmember Schrader, I'm not sure I understand.
Mr. Mayor, just a follow-up.
Councilman Schrader.
I'm just trying to, clearly you could work with staff then, but we would still require this, I believe this additional access was necessary from a fire access standpoint and so.
And Councilmember Schrader, we're not talking about losing the emergency access. We would still have to have an emergency access that satisfies emergency service standards. We would slide that up and then put the pathway on the other side of that so that there's a permanent buffer, as Councilmember Borton put it, between the home and whatever ultimately develops to our south.
I would actually ask staff to comment if they can, if they have any initial thoughts on that proposal. Certainly then looks like you kind of have an access issue from a pedestrian standpoint, potentially, but, yeah, I think that might work. It seems like a potential solution at first blush, but I'd ask Sonya or someone on staff to comment on whether they think that's a viable option.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader, staff's really not a fan of designing projects in the public hearing forum. You know, there's just, there's, like, the applicant brought up the block length. You know, it's just hard when you're sitting here to make sure you're thinking about all the things you need to think about. Not sure it would be an issue, to answer your question, assuming all the code requirements are met and the fire department access is provided.
Mr. Mayor, over on this side of the world. Since we're talking about fire department access, I'll go ahead and put my two cents in. So with this particular project, there are code requirements for the distance between those two. It's half the diagonal of the property. And so there is a distance requirement that they would still have to meet. So it may not be exactly where that is, but it would be, it would have to be somewhere in there to make sure that they meet the fire code requirements.
So, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure I understand the dialogue here. So when this phase goes in, that pathway that is shown now would not exist, but you'd still have the emergency access until such time that second entryway is, through the commercial property, is allowed. And then there's enough room, because you've slid everything down, that that emergency access goes away, that becomes a buildable lot, and that pathway then is the buffer between the commercial and that property that would then be built once the emergency access has gone away. It's just a matter of the timing of when that goes away and then putting the path in after the emergency access goes away.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Holton, no, we're not proposing to hold off on the path. The path would go in and then it would just be adjacent to the temporary access. And then once the temporary access is no longer needed, pathway would still be there.
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Clark. Yeah, the timing on that, you've got access, it's a pathway already, and if you're going to construct a lot, I thought you'd just wait until that.
I see.
Be built and then you can put the pathway in, as long as, we all know the pathway's going to be there at a future date. So, and I want to bring it up now because we're talking about this because when I was on council before, we dealt with the Walmart being put in an overland. And that's a major impact. And you have houses back there. And we worked like crazy with the homeowners association and the type of wall and how high of the wall and all the landscaping that goes into that to mitigate that type of thing. And I think, and this is a comment towards staff, we have got to get better about these smaller commercial projects that butt up to these residential areas because the impacts are the same. You have trucks coming by, you have delivery trucks, you have people parking this way and that way, you have traffic. And that's not on the residential folks here. And I don't know if, in the process, when that comes forward with a plan, if we can put in buffers there and make it on the commercial. Because, you know, my other little pet peeve is residential pays 70% of the property taxes. So I'm going to put it on the commercial to make that happen, not the residences. So it's just one of those things. We have to really watch that because it does impact those folks. Even though these are different, they're skinny lots, smaller backyards, they have to deal with the noise and the lights and everything else, but we, since it's not a big commercial project like Walmart, I just think we have to, as a council, pay closer attention to that as well. So just my two cents, that's, you're going to hear that from me for the next four years, sorry. And, Mr. Mayor, just to add, not against this project, it's just one of those things that we have to figure out how to make these buffer areas work for everybody. Counsel, are there any other questions at this point in time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Just to piggyback on what Brad said, also, if this project is approved, allowing, you know, future homeowners to know that there's going to be commercial on that corner. I mean, I can't tell you how many different times we have applications that come before us where the hard corner is pasture or it's weeds or whatever, and homeowners are shocked out of their minds that commercial is going to be going in that corner and they're upset because they weren't notified. And so the last thing I also, we want is to have your future homeowners to be upset that we're allowing access through this potential subdivision into commercial and how that may or may not affect traffic and all of the other concerns that homeowners have. Something that we need to talk about as well.
You know, Councilmember Borton, I mean, your point's well-taken. I mean, whenever I hear that, I think about, you know, some days in Harris Ranch, you know, when someone asked us, you know, are those cows going to be there forever? And, you know, no. You know, in this case, you know, the road will have the sign on it that says this road to be extended in the future because it's going to be stubbed out, so that's going to help with that sort of thing. And then in addition, you know, you hope the folks will do their due diligence and make sure they understand what's approved next to them. But your point's very well-taken.
We're going to hear it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
I have to go way off the rails, but I appreciate the solution. I think it captures some compromise in trying to address that southern, southwest corner parcel. I can't think of anything that necessitates the pedestrian access at the kind of mid-block. I don't think that solves any problem necessarily. So by moving it down, does provide some additional buffer, perhaps encourages pedestrians to not walk in that entrance to the commercial section, but perhaps walk upon that, which is another collateral benefit. Someday maybe we can discuss adding on those, this road will be extended in the future and then placing a copy of the plat on, literally on that sign. I mean, I'm half joking, but I don't know why not. There's means to try and communicate, here's what's approved here, would cost any more.
Sure.
More ways to communicate. So I appreciate, I think your crew has come up with, I think, a fair compromise to capture the concern on that southwest corner.
And thank you for raising it. So obviously, that's, we took it as a good suggestion, so we'll see what we can do to make that happen.
Are there any other questions or comments? The applicant?
I'm going to weigh in for just very quick on two minor points from my perspective. I agree with Councilwoman Schrader, now's not the time to have a conversation about Eves if there's something that we think is of importance or value. Let's do that in the right context as compared to one-offs on a specific application. And then from my, just in case there's an act of God and things move forward much faster, I think that putting a time restriction on when the first permit could be pulled of January 1, 2011, as an example, or 2021, at that standpoint, that would, that should be well before what we've heard the applicant state would be their timeframe before they would ever get to that point in time. Or some date within the, we just don't want people moving in in March for some reason by an act of God before, two months before the end of the school season is up and them trying to be put into the school. So if the applicant would be open to a date certain, if the council thinks that that's appropriate, then what would that be?
Mr. Mayor, I could respond to that. Any date that you select on that's going to be arbitrary. You know, January 1, March 1, May 1. You know, ultimately what this comes down to is the time it takes to get this process through the city process. So there's not, you know, there's not going to be, well, there's not going to be an act of God unless everything changes here that would allow us to get going before the timeframe when those schools are going to be online. And again, this is a 92-lot development, you know, it's only going to be a handful of homes that would be online by the time you get to fall of 2021. So to me, it's just unnecessary, you know.
I've been told that January 1 sounds great. And that's why if council even thinks it's relevant, but.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I think it's a fantastic suggestion. I appreciate that that sounds like extraordinary circumstances, but I think we are in extraordinary circumstances with our schools. And, you know, that would give us a real safeguard around the issue. So I appreciate you making that suggestion.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just clarify, one of the reasons why my initial response was to push back on that was because I didn't know what type of permits you were talking about. You know, obviously, we're going to need grading permits before that happens. I'm assuming that your point is residential building permits.
Building permit, yes.
Okay. With that clarification, I feel a lot better, so, okay.
Counsel, anything further or do I have any motion? Close the public hearing or not?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
A move that we close the public hearing on item 6B.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item 6B. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those papers come by saying aye.
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 Does pose a aye? You guys have it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll kick off some discussion.
Councilman Schrader.
Great. I appreciate the applicant trying to work with the neighbors, meeting and exceeding our requirement for open space and making some adjustments to what they originally intended in order to work well and create a project that fits well within the city. I continue to have some concerns about our school overcrowding, but the small unit count and the timeline to deliver the product with the additional requirement of a date to pull the residential building permit makes me comfortable. So I would be supportive of approving the project if we make those requirements.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I had hoped, even with the previous applications in this area, that that whole corner would be able to be developed as a whole. However, I realize that's probably not realistic at this point. And so I think, that being said, that I think the applicant has done everything they possibly can to appease what we have requested of them and to comply with code. I appreciate very much that they're in agreement with commission's recommendations and definitely in need in our city for this price point, for sure. And it's in our code that we, as a council and a staff, will promote a variety of housing types and options for residents. So I appreciate that that is something that we're considering this evening. And I think this location is a pretty good location for this. I don't know anything, I can't think of anything in that area that causes me concern for this density in that location. I think it'll be really interesting to see how that forager property to the south, you know, eventually gets, eventually gets built out. However, if that owner, if those owners in that surrounding area don't have objections to this and didn't come this evening to share their concerns, then we don't have any way to know that they have concerns, so. That's all.
Have any further comments or would anyone like to take a stab at a motion? Councilboard.
I move that we approve item 6B H. 2019-01-09 to include a DA that captures the conditions in the staff report and the remarks made by the applicant today, including the mayor's request to have the no residential building permit issued prior to January 1 of 2021. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Pro.
If legal needs to answer this, but do we need to require the applicant to provide a copy of their contract with the school district or with Sawtooth about that, just so that the district can't back out? Is that something? I don't know how that works on our side.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Pro, I think there is a requirement in the DA that they have to provide an easement to the other side for their side of the property. It sounds like they've been in agreement with the district staff, so it is a trustee decision, but we wouldn't condition their development in agreement on somebody else's agreement.
Okay. So if the trustees decide not to agree to that, what happens?
Then they wouldn't connect.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, may I answer that?
Yes, you may.
Councilwoman Pro, there is a provision in the staff report in the existing development agreement that, or in the proposed development agreement, that they provide a pedestrian connection out to the sidewalk along Linder Road. It does not specify where. They are proposing it on the school.
They are proposing it on the school district property, but if that falls through for some reason, they're still required to provide it on their property. So that is a requirement either way, whether or not the school district agrees to it or not on their property.
Okay. Thank you, that makes me more comfortable.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Borton.
Motion does include the applicant's comments with regards to relocating the pedestrian access to the west as well, and that solution on that southwest lot and.
Agreed. I don't have a vote, but I agree.
Mr. Mayor, yes, if you wanted to make that part of the motion, the second does agree with that.
If there's no further discussion on the motion, the court will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Pearl.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. Thank you. We will now move on to item 7A ordinance, so this will be I, ordinance number 20-1873, and that's a court to read it by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance 20-1873, an ordinance related to Percy subdivision H. 2019-0097 for rezon of a portion of government lot 2 of section 31, Township 3 North, Range 1 East, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. Establishing determining the land use zoning classification of 30.02 acres of land from R. 4 Medium Low Density Residential Zoning District to R. 8 Medium Density Residential Zoning District in the Meridian City Code. Providing the copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? If not, do I have any motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
I have been informed by my fellow council members that this seat is the one required to make motions on these ordinances. However, I understand that there's a clause I'm supposed to use that allows us to shorten it, and I can't remember off the top of my head what it is, so I'm going to request. Oh, okay, got it. So I move that we approve ordinance number 201873 with a suspension of rules.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and we approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, court will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Pearl.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All ayes, motion passes. Item 98, future meeting topics, do we have anything that, for our future meeting discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Borton.
We may place for a 10-minute workshop discussion, quick thumbs up, thumbs down on getting into the weeds on eaves and R. 4 and R. 8. Perhaps that could be a March-April workshop. Do we want to open that door and discuss it in light of this discussion?
I will ask the council president to put that on his list of things to evaluate future consideration.
Can you read that?
Uh, yes.
I can?
Yeah, I read attorney.
Mr. Mayor, how does this process work? Do we end up making a motion to, to contribute that time in the future, or is this just things that we're throwing out there?
Yeah, it goes in the vault for these guys.
Okay. I would like to have some time to discuss the letters from the West Ada School District. In our last meeting with them, they talked about what we would like to, to hear from them on each of these applications, whether what they're currently sending is sufficient for us, and whether there's anything else we would like to hear or know on each of the applications. So I realize that each council may have had different preferences on that, and it may have changed over time, but it sounded like the school, school district was asking us if we would do that in our hearing.
Thank you, and I think what we talked about was waiting until we get the position on board.
Okay.
Because they're doing, they're actually going to be the ones that are going to be providing the information.
Okay.
So we can say this is what we'd like you to get along with the school district. So it is on the, on the to-do, just probably not for a couple of months till we get someone in that position.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Two, two suggestions to throw out there, since we're having a little open discussion. I would be very interested to hear a short, perhaps five-minute update on city preparations in the very unlikely event of the coronavirus coming to town. I just think it's good risk management for us to anticipate problems ahead of time and have a plan in place, which I'm sure we do. That's one suggestion that I have. The other suggestion I would be interested to explore with my fellow council members if you want to talk a little bit more about the issues in the school district, how we want to coordinate with them, and just have some general follow-up, and maybe key takeaways on that meeting that we had with West Ada, even maybe a more holistic discussion than just the, the letters that we receive. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Just, nothing for a future topic, although it will be discussed. I will be attending the first official meeting of the Expo Idaho Advisory Committee tomorrow night, so we start hearing from Expo Idaho and their needs, and we're going to be electing a chairman, vice chairman, and those types of things. So if you have any thoughts, ideas, let me know, and anybody in the public who can email me if they have thoughts on that, but it's kicking off for real tomorrow night.
Excellent. Well, maybe we'll have a report from you on a future meeting topic, if relevant.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sure you will.
One more, Mr. Mayor, since we're throwing stuff around. Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater, I can get our EMS chief at, whenever you, the guys would like to give you a full update on the coronavirus. He's, he's well versed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Speaking for myself, I would love to get that update. Thank you very much for offering it.
I'll work to get it on the schedule then, and I'll have him come present to you.
Do I have any other motions that someone would like to make tonight?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second. I motion second to adjourn the meeting. Any discussions? If not, all those favors come by saying aye.
Aye.
Does pose an aye? The ayes have it, we are adjourned.
I thought we had Bruce, Bruce Freckleton do the coronavirus update.